Bruce.
Bruce, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we get into our, before we get into our agenda, I would like to take just a little bit of time here. We had a, our planning director Amber had a real tragic loss Saturday. She lost her husband Jay, a very well-known individual in our community as well as a member of our search and rescue. So at this time, I would ask everyone if we could take a moment of silence on behalf of that. Okay, thank you. All right, Bruce, is there any changes on our agenda?
Mr. Chairman, during general business, we'll note that the agenda is the DMG parking ramp or approachment agreement. I don't have anything to present today, so that's off. I would ask that you add the agreement for fire inspection with American engineering testing regarding the public safety and services project. So that would be in addition. I would note that eight twenty-five, there are three public hearings there, the first three that were continued from a couple of meetings, two thousand twenty-four, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. They asked you, then you continue those until your first meeting in May. And then other than that, I don't know.
A motion for approval of our agenda.
Most approved, the agenda is amended.
Second, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we have a motion and a second for, to approve our agenda with the, the changes. Before it follows in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Do we have any conflicts this morning? Okay. How about our meeting minutes from April ninth?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from April ninth.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Point of order, do we need to approve the adjustment that we did? We wait until it's all closed, right?
That will end until today. We'll close that out, so we'll do those on April. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, no problem. What's your pleasure on the bills? I've, I've gone through them and have any other questions?
My question's answered.
Grab by the answer.
I'm good.
Most approved of the bills. Second, okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the bills. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Grab your bills.
Do we have any personal help, Brenda?
Thank you, Chairman, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, the first one I have is to hire Marlene Barrett in the elections department. Marlene has helped me in the past in the running the absentee precinct door and our satellite office over in Spearfish and helps out during that time. So I'd like to make that effective. For starting on May sixteenth, we start absenteeing over in Spearfish on May twentieth, and again, our in the office start, you know, just to refresh her on, on the process. And she'll be a part-time fill-in employee, employee one, grade three, at a base pay of twenty-two to thirteen.
Does Miss Barrett have any experience?
Yes.
She doesn't need the training hours?
No. None whatsoever.
So.
My mom hired her.
You have a motion and a second for approval. Further discussion?
Yeah, I was, yeah, I knew her down there. She's not a new hire.
Well, she, she is because she did new, have to approve her every, every year that she worked. Yeah, so.
She's been there for a lot of years.
Further discussion.
That she has.
All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
My mom hired her and I got to accept her resignation.
That was a tough one to choose. Um, I do have a couple of corrections. Back in February, we approved some step raises for a J D Marshall and a McKenzie Gerald. Gerald and the amount that was listed was twenty-three forty-nine and it should be twenty-three thirty-nine. So I just need a motion to correct that in the minute. So they're paid at the proper grade.
I'll move that and make the correction.
Thank you.
Sorry, can't we have a motion and a second to correct, amend the minutes? Wait, how long ago was?
It was that last meeting in February. Yeah, so they've only been paid once on that.
All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Thank you very much. And then just the last thing I have is request for a cell phone citation for Kyle Anderson. He is in the information systems and technology department. Greg is also here. If you have any questions, he is now being placed on, on call.
Most approved.
I'll second that.
Can't you have a motion and a second for approval? All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, that seventy-five dollars, a lot of fifty, a lot of a hundred, a lot of how do I have to settle the charge?
That was arrived at a long time ago based on how long they would have their phone, excuse me, their phone, what a reasonable cost would be for service and so that after so many years, at least they would be able to apply to them in a good place.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. Okay, I see we have one travel request.
Um, this is for equalization to attend the South Florida Association of Accessory Setting Officers Paperson Aberdeen. It's for Mike Meehan, Herman Simons, and Christine Mackey, and they're also requesting to be traveling bands. And this will be from June fourth through June seventh.
Mandatory agreements. Move approval. Second, can't we have a motion and a second for approval? All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Point of replacement.
Yes, um, so we, the fleet fire department reached out to Bruce and I last week. They had a resignation Christopher Sanders and his effective date is March twentieth of two thousand twenty-four. And pursuant to S D C L thirty-four thirty-one A fifteen point one, they're asking to replace him. Or let me start. Austin Wilson has resigned and they're replacing him with Christopher Sanders.
Move approval. Second, can't we have a motion and a second for approval? All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Declare six surplus tires. I believe these came out of the hot back in the day and they've had them in storage and have decided that they need to dispose of them. They'll go along with some of the highway dispensers, is that correct, Paul?
That's right.
Need a motion for that.
So moved.
Second, can't we have a motion and a second for approval? All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Weed spring agreement, agreement, Bruce.
Mr. Chairman, your consideration would be asking the operator's chairman to sign this year's weed spring agreement to Lawrence County basis pieces in the Forest Service annually for as long as I remember.
Move approval. Oh, second. Can't we have a motion and a second for approval?
Let's might add, Commissioner, oh, the chairman that they're prioritizing some weeds. They do not prioritize Canada Thistle because essentially the Forest Service is throwing in the towel on Canada Thistle. They now just focus on the weeds that they think they can control.
Really?
Even though the private landowners are required to control them as an act, as an option.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yeah, one thing they add on there to use Tordon, Tordon is supposed to be used around the water. So in the case.
I think, I think Dave follows the label instructions carefully. We've had discussions about things like that. And so I think he's really mindful about things. Yeah.
Yes, he is. Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Bruce, did you want to add that fire inspection under this at this time?
I certainly can. Yes, one second. So yesterday afternoon, every Monday, we have a meeting regarding public safety and services project. At that time, they indicated that it is time for us to get a consultant to do, I guess what I would call penetration testing. This is a requirement of the city of Deadwood. And so our architect searched out and found a firm in Rapid City that performs this service. You have a cover letter issued by Alabas explaining the timing of it and sort of why it's required. And then accompany that for us is, is agreement with American Engineering Testing. As you're looking for authorization to have the chairman sign that. And the total cost estimated is two thousand seven hundred and eighty-eight.
Yeah, what's your pleasure? I move to approve. Second, okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Would you like to come up for the sheriff's report or?
I have nothing to report.
You have nothing. Everything, life is good.
It is good. For me, anyway, I don't know.
Does the board, any board members have any questions or? All right, thank you, guys. Brenda, would you like to fill us in on these three one more time and we'll lead you to the appropriate?
They've been taken off, right?
Well, we have, we have to do it though.
Oh, that's right. Mr. Chairman, again, if I can just reiterate those first year resolutions that have been continued the last two evenings, two thousand twenty-four, fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen. We were waiting to hear back from the engineer, from the surveyor with a plan to show a replacement role for those being vacated. Got to the engineer yesterday, Eddie, and Jesse, how we get the engineer to force him to wait until you're back from surveying. And so there's no plan to consider. So I told him that I would ask to continue it until May, subject to your approval.
So moved. All three of them. Second, okay, we have a motion and a second for approval to move this down the road to the next meeting. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Okay. One more, Mr. Chairman, there's also a follow-up on two, two, August twenty-four nineteen. As a public hearing exposed that at your last meeting, I believe. And the question there was whether or not the adjacent landowner, in this case, it was home state, had any objection to the vacation heard from Martezin yesterday. And he confirmed that they have no objection. So it's ready for action to be carried.
There's close on that, so we're ready for a motion. Most approved, the vacation. We have a motion and a second for approval of the vacation. Any further inspection? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Now we're ready to go. Okay, Mr. Babe. Morning, sir.
I have a, one application for a, a private approach. This is on the Big Horn Road. This is the one that we talked about at last meeting that the gentleman wanted to move it down the road a hundred feet. I since then have been able to inspect the site and it has a adequate site distance and will need a culvert. It's, uh, going to services a new home on this property. I recommend that we approve it.
Most follow recommendation.
Second. Get rid of motion in a second to follow the highway superintendent's recommendation. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And then next is the work order from, from our, our, or our bridge inspection that we approved for Rose Engineering. And the state requires Rose to send a work order with an estimate of costs, which Rose did, the state that boards it to us with the estimate. And as you can see there, the estimate is seventy-four thousand, three hundred dollars, and that's the maximum. Cannot be more than that. And then we, we're only responsible for twenty percent of that through the, through the state grant. So I do need, need a signature on this to, to send it back. And the state again has clarified the light in blue wink.
Your recommendation?
I would recommend we sign.
All recommendation. The chairman to sign.
I'll second. Can't we have a motion and a second for approval for the signature? All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
If we actually got in the ground without.
For which bridge?
For the one they did the inspection.
I didn't. Well, this is for our, all of our bridges. This is for all of them. This is for, you know, every, every two years, our bridges have to be inspected. And then we do have six bridges or seven bridges that are on annual inspection because of their condition, two of which are going to come off because we're, we closed one and we're going to be closing this other one when we get this bypass. Which, by the way, yesterday I received the preliminary plans for that bypass and everything's way ahead of schedule. So.
Oh, good.
I anticipate getting started on this thing late May, early June. That is, so, uh, but this is, this is for all of our bridges. So the state pays eighty percent of all of the bridge inspections. That's correct.
You're going to do the, have the county crew do the bypass.
We're going to do the bypass. We're going to build it, construct ourselves. Yes.
That sounds great.
Yeah, so that's moving forward and looking good too. So, um, I did include in this meeting the, our tenure gravel plan. Again, you know, the tenure, it's history to look at, that kind of living, breathing thing. It's, it changes as we go. But I do have our list of roads that we're planning on graveling in twenty-four. And of course, two of those are the roads that we took over to Spearfish. Those are kind of right on the top of the list. Those are probably the worst route they've traveled since the city took them to begin. So.
Kind of solid watchboard right now.
Yeah, they're a pretty tough shape. And I do know that North twenty-seventh, that will require a little more than just gravel. That's going to require some culverts and few items like that. Okay, so just a warning there. But we did reduce our gravel mileage just because the price of gravel this year did come in. And we kind of had an adjustment this year. Everything kind of caught up. So when we did the budget last year, you can see our budget numbers were done at eleven dollars and twenty-five cents. And now this year, our average gravel price came in at twelve sixty-six. So. Okay, so we did, you know, just to keep the, keep it within the budget, we just, we reduced some mileage of what we're going to gravel this year. We were down to twenty last year. We did cut that down to eighteen and a half this year just to keep it in that budget as well. Okay? So that's the plan as this year. If you guys have anything you think should be done or shouldn't be done, I sure would appreciate any input. And again, the tenure plan is just a real loose outline. Changes every year.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I know that in the past, there's been some discussion of taking some of these secondary roads off of the county system. Has anything ever done, been done to that?
Well, we've had discussions on it. We've had tours and, yeah, it's been, been brought up and discussed quite a few times.
And they were decided not to do, because some of these.
We just never, we just never got to that.
It's a longer discussion. I'd like, I'll give you my opinion if you'd like to hear it sometime. There's driveway concerns in South County and Forest Service easements. And so there was really kind of involved. But I, I'd love to give you my opinion on this out there. Like I say, it's.
We can certainly look into it again.
Well, I was just kind of wondering why, why nothing happened. There were some, you know, the roads were, you know, people had, whole, whole owners passed away and then the property, you know, dilapidated and then those were obviously removed. There are a few that should not have existed. Okay, um, and then lastly, I guess I did submit a, a culvert inspection that we started, you know, just a couple of years ago. We're always working on that. I mean, by law, we're supposed to do that every so often. It doesn't really give a timeframe of when you're supposed to be informed. By law, you're supposed to be informed. So I, I did give you one gravel or one culvert inspection sheet. And there'll be more to come on that. So other than that, I have nothing more for you. If you have something for me, I certainly, anyone have any questions for your board yet?
I just, on this gravel or culvert inspection sheet, what do you call them?
Well, there you're, in the state inventory, you got your latitude and your longitude, your U P S coordinates. And then the, the descriptions, you know, you'll see the, this type of culvert with the CMP standing for corrugated metal pipe. If it's concrete, it says that. You will sell it as if it's a concrete box or whatever. And then, of course, the road location, the number, size of the pipe. And then at the end, there is a condition, a condition.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, they're, one or two, one or two long. That makes sense now.
That's how they need it in their inventory. When any of these pipes that have to be reported, some of them have to be reported to the state too, if they're in the small structure programs. If it's over a bridge size or under, over a small structure size, that can be reported to the state as well. Okay?
There's still one coming out of the bank there.
Is there?
Probably.
I haven't been out there for a while, Richard. I'll go out and have a look at it soon as I can. Thank you.
You're getting great, though.
Yep, yeah. Is Greg still here?
I'll, I'll define you.
Our next item is a public hearing, but it's, it's slated for nine A M. And out of respect for those that probably looked at the agenda and want to be here, we will wait until nine o'clock to do that hearing. Thank you, John, for yours. So we'll try to take care of a couple of items here.
No hands strength.
Jeez.
Like that was.
It's tabled. I don't know what I did.
It was quick.
Just trying to make a smaller pile, right?
Yeah.
So we have a couple of minutes here.
Yeah, let's take a five minute break. We're all waiting for Greg.
Those guys didn't hit the bastards on the way in.
Yeah, said they gave me crap about it.
Yeah, they did, yeah.
Nothing wrong with my route.
No, I always go that way, dude. I've been there, color ice.
Did you say that we know?
How are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
Good.
We could utilize something like that, it would cover the whole room. And we've done many, many testing opportunities in the past. And I can be sitting in the back row over here and speaking with the regular conversation. Oh, they fix it up just fine. But you could use that in conjunction with the meeting as well. And that could suffice for your input for the people that are connected.
Yeah.
That's, that's a relatively inexpensive cost, that's about seventy-five dollars. Actually, I ordered one just recently because it's nice that Brenda has a backup for that. This has been used for quite a few years and same device is available. And so we have one, we can actually test it out if we wanted to. So even for, for, for that solution, just to change the microphone and the speakers, you know, we're talking, you know, two hundred fifty dollars and you could actually incorporate that. If that's something you desire. One thing that came up in the conversation regarding having a microphone on the table is that during the course of the meeting, there's a lot of paper shuffle. Sometimes you pick that up. Can I just hand that, Brenda? Is it, is it pronounced or is it? So you don't think that way itself would cause a problem?
Yeah.
Sure. Great, great. Just to be clear, so the speakers in the ceiling would allow you in the room to hear better. The microphone would allow the folks on the, on the internet to hear better, I think, right?
Yeah.
So those are the two different things that we're talking about that are different.
I'm not, I'm not being clear, that's exactly right.
It took me a while to figure that out, but I've talked to you, so I know. So the speakers, the ceiling, don't have any microphone?
No, there's, there's no microphone. That, that's why we have the microphone for others to hear, speakers for us to hear from. So, you know, if you, if you were happy with your, your TV situation, you wouldn't have to change it. It's, it's, it's about à la carte, if you will, in that respect. You can, you know, implement what you want and not have to spend money on something else if you don't think it's worth while. Now, that, that is a, a, a low-cost solution. There are some other options, if you would so desire. There would need to get some, some quotes for that. We could even go to the point where we have individual microphones and actual individual cameras in front of each one of you. You have your own camera and your own microphone. That would be connected to another conferencing platform that, that's more open-ended for, for different types of devices we can connect to it. And, or a couple of different cameras mounted that are pivoting cameras that would actually sense if you're speaking, instead of using cameras in front of you, we have a camera on each side of the room. If they, they ran, if, if, if speaking at that moment, you would know that and it would actually focus in on them. So there's some options with that as well. That's obviously a more expensive solution, but it might suit you better because currently the cameras you've got in place are okay, but they, they don't, they're really target on somebody who's speaking. So you can, you can see the meeting, but you can't really see exactly who's speaking and be able to watch that too. So that is an option as well. I would have to get you some pricing for that.
Is it example, that one was owl cameras?
It's kind of, it's a little bit different than the owl. The owl one is, is one that just sits in the middle of the table. It's, it's very similar to what, what I'm talking about, but it's, it doesn't give you as good an angle. It basically shows the side. So what you have is I would personally, I would be okay with enhancing the, the sound part of it. And then possibly having a discussion on some of this other stuff when we do our budget. But the simple stuff that if you think would help the audience as well as us would certainly worth looking at.
My biggest concern was when you're online, you could not hear the person talking or anyone in the audience that direction. Sure, the rest of the room was okay, but you just couldn't hear that. Proving that would mean a lot.
And the two of those, you know, are, are a big expense and probably could afford that right away if you want to make sure plenty.
It may not be a bad thing to exploit putting the seal if you don't hear this or this.
Yeah, we, and that was, that was another option, looking at some, some microphones, microphone or microphones. Depending on that, that's something we actually do discuss.
But that, yeah.
Like you say, there are some options.
Be able to have the sound come out of that and then. Relatively inexpensive, I think.
Okay.
A bunch.
I'm, I'm in agreement with these gentlemen. You know, I'm not a big fan of, of having the technology capability, but if we're going to have it, we need to have it, it's usable. The microphone is a big part of it and the speakers also. Seems to me that we just need to pitch that thing right away and get a decent microphone and speaker system, run the speaker system through there so we can all hear when somebody's communicating.
Well, I have a bigger room or available time.
Well, of course, I mean, you know, you, you are restricted by the size of the room and the layout of the room and the available, available space. You know, one thing that has come up in the conversation is dedicated computer. For example, like in our, in our emergency operations center, we have a lectern and a dedicated computer that if someone wants to come in there, they can utilize that system. This room is laid, laid out in such a manner, it's just not a lot of room for something like that. So we could put a dedicated computer literally under the desk that's about that big. We would still have monitor situation to deal with with Bruce is sitting or wherever you might want to put it. That would take up some space. So that is something we can absolutely do. And there's, there's a lot of merit to having a dedicated machine here. That way, you know, like say Bruce, he could use a laptop or something else. You still have a monitor situation to deal with, so.
I would also be in favor of having a screen on this back wall so the chair can see who's online when we're sharing, sharing a different screen. I don't know, we need one back here, but we certainly need one.
That sure does require two different. Because when there's something else on these, it, you have to change, you definitely have two computers. Uh, well, what we would have, so, and that's one, we would have to have a, a, the number of outputs. And I think we can do without another machine. But right now, that, that computer sees this system as two monitors. It seems to receive one because one goes to this footer. So what we could actually do is acquire either another direct connection to a TV and, and get him two video outputs. Now he would then show three monitors. He would have more, he would, whoever's managing it would have more monitors to manage and keep track of. Make sure they're in the right order, you know, to, to your machine knows, okay, is it one, two, three, or one, two, three? You have to know that, so it takes some getting used to. But then you could drag those other windows over to here, there, and then you could actually have multiple things off, off and running at the same time.
Do I hear then a consensus to go forward with getting the speakers in the ceiling operational and then getting another one of these microphones that Brenda had? Is that the two components to work on immediately?
It's entirely okay. When I get the speakers, there are no problem. And, and just to test that one out this time, if you want to look at something in the ceiling, I would have to actually get some pricing for you because there's a lot of different options for that.
And, and the screen too, there is some money in your budget for supplies. It's probably two or three thousand dollars, so we want to know how much.
And the TV would be something like six hundred, seven hundred dollars. That would be a big option, plus, plus a mount for another hundred, so maybe.
Is the wiring and stuff in the ceiling to accommodate the other TV down there?
That's a good question. I don't know about this side over here. We do have, we do have wiring in the ceiling for it and running, running video cable.
So we'll proceed like that for now?
What's?
Do we need a motion for that?
I'd actually.
Do you want a motion?
Yes. I would move that we start, Mr. Davis, to move forward with upgrading our microphone and our speaker system within the building and to continue to look into the costs of what it would take to put a monitor in.
Okay.
Oh, second. I, I think we'll have to wait until a bunch of time myself. Well, okay, we have a motion in a second for the discussion. I, I certainly think we need to address the larger problem at budget time. But this sounds like this is going to be pretty insignificant as far as expense to try to get our sound better right now.
This will be, like Bruce had mentioned, you have some funding available for, for that type of thing. It's well under what you have budget for that one.
Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
We're still, we're still ahead of schedule here.
So with that, Bruce went to see if he could get a Brett to come down here. Appreciate you folks' patience. We, the hearing that I think most of you are here for is scheduled for nine AM. So out of courtesy for other people that might be coming at that time, we're going to wait until nine. Brett, you want to come up?
Sir. Before we start.
If you sign please.
And we need to make a motion to. We need to.
Make a motion to recess as the county commission and to as board of justice.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to.
Eight forty-five.
Recess the board of county commissioners and, and come to order as a board of equalization. All of us in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Mr. Chairman, also going around is the oath of office.
No, they, isn't Bobby's the sign? Just thought, yeah.
Here's that all.
Yeah. Because he didn't sign it last time.
So he just signs just the one?
Yep. Thank you.
Are we ready? Carmen?
This is the continuation for Aaron Smith. We have a lot over in Whitewood that have the issues with the city as far as what he can and cannot put on that lot and the fact that there is a slot of gypsum that's fairly significant. You can't put in the correct sewage and so forth because of that gypsum. So basically, this is stipulation of value. The original price of that lot, or excuse me, the original assessed value of that lot was NAD. It was six point six acres. Forty-three thousand eight forty was the original value. That will actually change. The classification will stay the same, the acreage will stay the same, but the land will go to thirty-one thousand eight ninety. And that was kind of a cost to cure as far as my knowledge takes me when it comes to that kind of stuff.
You guys, you guys worked that out? Do you agree to that?
He did, he did agree, yes.
Most follow-up.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second to follow recommendation and further discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried.
Thank you.
One more. In-house correction.
Yeah, this is an in-house correction and actually we have more information. It was just an owner occupied and she had filled out the owner occupied at the time. It's just that we had gotten it completed and not done our thing in time. So she was, she was good for the deadline. All that's happening is her business is on the lower level. She has her apartment above that and she lives in that. And she just wanted to get owner occupied status on that second level. So it's just to approve that. Last patient, James.
Thanks for making a motion to follow recommendation and do the house cleaning adjustments. Second. We have a motion in a second to follow recommendation for the discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion will say aye.
Aye.
Close, motion carried. Is that clean at all up there?
That cleans it all up.
Thank you.
Right now.
I'll make a motion to adjourn as the board of equalization from the week being this county commission.
But, okay, motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion will say aye. Close, motion carried. All right, ladies and gentlemen, we get another ten-minute break until nine AM.
You can make a.
They're starting your project, how about the new jail site doing the treatment work right there today?
Oh, are they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You provide their insurance and stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. The services center, John Sweets, who started doing the firewise treatment. They're raring to go, I think they got list starts.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah. Yeah. They make the money they want it to.
I guess so. They cut down on some of the.
So is that right? That would have been a long evening. Exactly, yeah. Well, Gil joined.
Did she?
Yeah. She was heavily involved when we were in California. First time that we get a chip drop board for fundraiser.
All right, we're gonna call a meeting back to order. Thank you for your patience. It is nine AM. Amber's not with us today, she lost her husband this weekend, so I appreciate you. If you can hear in your prayers for her family. Bruce will be giving us the information that we need. The first item on us before us is first reading and public hearing. So with that said, we're gonna have the public hearing and the discussion. No decisions will be made today on any of these items. It's just the first reading that'll continue into the next, our next scheduled meeting. But the first one is ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero one subdivision ordinance amendment. Bruce, would you lead us in this?
I'm getting started, and I would defer to anybody else. I see Tim Comer is here complaining and zoning, Rick is here, Eric as well. John Bay is here too, highway superintendent. If I may, Mr. Chairman, Brenda reminds me, if I had any minutes for the planning and zoning meetings, I might just read from that. So these are Amber's comments regarding twenty four, twenty twenty four oh one. She stated that this is the subdivision ordinance provisions that have been previously presented. She knows that Randy Diver was present and has been served with DOT standards. And would like to see some verbiage for exceptions. I think that relates to maybe approaches. Amber said that she feels that, that you can ask for an exception at the time that the plot would come forward. Randy reported that he has concerns with the verbiage for water systems. I'd like to see definitions showing differentiation which flows are needed for the fire plan. And Amber said that the board previously opted to leave the fire protection section alone for now. I think you'll see that reflected in the document, there's a note there. And that it would be proposed to stay the same as it currently is. And so with that, I think planning and zoning recommended, recommended approval. And there was no comments.
Okay. At this time, we'll open it up for the public hearing. I would ask that you, just one little footnote, folks. People get pretty passionate about issues. And I would ask today if you would speak kindly and respectfully. We're here to listen to everybody's concerns and to consider them also. Anyway, we're gonna, we will start the hearing here and just.
You might, you might, you might explain there's three different public hearings on three completely different items. This is really a housekeeping thing, this is subdivision ordinance. The next one is on wastewater systems, on lots. And then the third one is on changing some things over the board of adjustment. So the third one, I believe is what most people are concerned with. So if you're not aware, this is not, the first one is, and I hate to say it's just housekeeping, because it's not. There's a lot, there's a lot involved in it, but it's the subdivision ordinance, which is separate, distinct from anything that might have to be a part of adjustment. Bar condition use permits.
Bruce, I appreciate those comments. With that said, just to reiterate what the chairman said, and what Fisher Flanagan said. These are first readings for all three of these ordinances and the public hearing. So no decision making today, it will be deferred until meeting on May fourteenth. If I may, Mr. Chairman, one more thing. Brenda has kindly asked, and I think it's going around, there's a sign up sheet there. You're not required to sign up on that, but it helps her in the minutes to capture your name and your address accurately in the minutes. That's what it's being used for. So that's on the table there. We'd ask that everybody that speaks, please sign that, thank you.
Anything else? All right, at this time, we're gonna open it up. I'd ask that you stand, state your name and address for the record, even though you signed the sheet. And we'll go from there. Who would like to speak at this time for or against the change before us? Mr. David.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Randy Diver, seventeen fifteen Scott Avenue, Spearfish, South Dakota. As the notes reflected from the public hearing and zoning meeting, there were just a few areas of observation that I had. Primarily on page thirty and thirty one. You will notice on page thirty one, items five for culverts after the eighteen inches, says a comma. And then says unless approved otherwise. I think that's a very appropriate addition to some of the items on page thirty and thirty one. Mainly because of how we're practicing, as I observe in the counties, bringing a lot of things to the county. And to be clear, clear that there is an exception process. So if you go to sheet or page thirty, intersections, three A, last sentence, it says not more than two streets shall intersect at any one point. A lot of the existing intersections in the county have four street names coming to an intersection. So I just wanted to bring that point up. On item E, adequate site distance shall be provided and maintained at all intersections per SV DOT design manual. And in a lot of occasions on our rural road system, you may not have that ability, but they're safe by the miles per hour. So I, at that item and on the crossroads, which is item F, in the driveway, which is item six. I'd like to see the language added that unless otherwise approved by the commission. Because there are several occasions that, that we cannot meet the DOT standards. For example, at certain speeds, they have twelve hundred foot space in between approaches. Some of our properties just aren't that big. And sometimes that's not practical where we live. So as we, as I've seen over the years, how we operate, you can come in and get an approach permit. A separate and distinct application. And then you have that approach permit and it would conflict with the ordinance possibly. Possibly. The last item is utilities, which is on page thirty seven. And I know that most of our utility providers that provides power in the county now require everything underground. But I would like to say that on occasion, the drop to the house will come from underground and go overhead on the property. And this isn't for maybe a subdivision, but an individual lot. So once again, the way I read it, there is an exception written in there for that, but I like that maybe clarified. I did speak with the highway superintendent regarding all of the items with roads. And I think Mr. Bay understands that sometimes we can't meet the DOT manual. And there are times that it makes common sense, especially in South County. And that, that we just need the process to acknowledge that it can't be done. This is the best we can do, and we're not infringing on the rights of the land. Okay?
So that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Want to speak for or against any of these changes at this time? One more time, anyone else? Okay, on this particular item, we'll close the public hearing. And as stated before, this is just the first reading. We will take it up again at our next meeting. Any of the board members want to have any discussions?
Mr. Bay, do you see any issue with any of the comments that Senator?
No, I do not. I agree with most everything said, not all of everything said. Most of our, southern half of our county, we can't, we cannot meet the DOT. We have not passed all of our, our approach permit, all of our process permitting, we have a lot of exceptions. So I think it should be reflected in the ordinance, just spell it out in there pretty, pretty simple. What do we have to go back? That's the thing.
That's the thing. So I think that the question then is, is if there's any changes to the proposed draft, unless it's really minor, anything substantive, we have to start the process over again. So the other alternative would be is, and it's not occurring to me just now, is there a general sort of exception provision that you can apply if that language isn't in a particular paragraph? And, and I, you're always allowed to interpret your ordinance. But, but it would probably, if you're inclined to want to have those changes, probably to start over again.
I think it's important to remember though, that this is a subdivision ordinance, it's not just a individual lot that we're addressing. So most of the time, I think that we would not need an exception for a subdivision.
What I think, and we've used the past, and I believe that what Mr. David said on the board, that there was if a developer came in, if they had a list of variances or exceptions from the, the thing they could apply for them at the beginning of that planning process. So until, until planning and zoning can get that plugged in, maybe where it's spelled out, that might be the constructive way to do that, constructive notice.
Another thought might be that, so Amber would apply the ordinance, and if somebody had an issue with something, effectively she, they could appeal her decision through, through the board of adjustment. And you could consider it as an appeal, right? And the interpretation, and maybe that's a way around that for at present.
I hate to kill the baby out of bathwater, I think there's been a lot of work done on this. I think it's still good with a couple of, couple of edits, and I don't want to send it back. But I think, I think there's ways to deal with it until we get a little grammatical adjustment, maybe. If I can word that that way, or if, let's see if you can find a blanket statement that might, might, might remedy the issues.
Well, we've been on this for two years, planning and zoning, working on it. And like sending it back, we just do a public hearing and go through the process again at planning and zoning. If there's enough changes on that that clears, and it clears it up better, I'd say let's go back. It's gonna take a couple of months, but it's not life or death when only subdivision's before us. I, I don't know. I mean, another way to look at it.
Certainly we make motions and attack, or?
Well, no.
We have to go through our next hearing?
Well, so I think at this point, if that's what your consensus is, then there's no sense of having the public hearing. And you can just say that, that's not.
We're gonna have a public hearing.
We are. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Just a second reading. We just won't have, second reading, and know that the process will have to start all over again, that's your implication.
And that would include public notice in the paper also.
Yeah, which is for planning and zoning. I mean, if you could, or the alternative is you could before it's your next meeting, and they take a board on it, and it fails, and then, so then it just starts over that way. Maybe people can see there's some finality to that. So otherwise, what you're saying today is, your decision is you're not gonna hold a second reading, and it's gonna start all over again. So the next time they can see it again, it would be at planning and zoning.
I'd, I'd rather adopt it and then do those, those adjustments after. Okay, so I still think in the process, you can request, you have at the very beginning, the variance from the requirements of the new section of the ordinance, then ask the.
Do the amendment.
This won't, this doesn't meet those sight lines or the design criteria. And we'd like, we'd like a variance from that. And then later on, in planning and zoning, you guys can do it, but then we're not, again, we're not throwing out this huge document you guys have spent so much time on, just to do a handful of line edits, I guess is what I would say, and not say that.
Okay, from what I'm hearing, then we go on and discuss this again at the next meeting.
So the second reading will be May fourteenth at about nine fifty.
All right. Next item on the agenda is another.
Mr. Chairman, this is the time of the place set for the public hearing concerning ordinance twenty twenty four oh two concerning wastewater. Again, I'll cite Amber's comments from the planning and zoning meeting, there was a public hearing there. There were no proponents or opponents, I think planning and zoning recommended approval. She would summarize it, say that the wastewater section changes to the ordinance. Changes the location of certain verbiage within the ordinance, and would also allow septic engineers to design to the number of people instead to the number of bedrooms. She states that there is a difference between county requirements and state requirements, but the county is more strict, not less. And so far, they have not come across any issues. And I would note, I would defer to maybe Commissioner Tisno as well. I think there were engineers and surveyors that were involved in these processes as well, that, that had their inputs, so they volunteered. I wish I could remember their names, a lot of their time and effort for free. And I also believe that Amber submitted this D A N R for their input as well. And so these changes will reflect that too. And again, I think it's probably properly characterized as more of a housekeeping matter.
Okay, again, this is a public hearing. Would you like to stand up and speak for or against this? Now is the time, please stand, state your name and address for the record. Anyone? Senator, Senator David.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Randy Diver, seventeen fifteen Scott Avenue. Mr. Alka kind of summarized the work groups that was early on in this process. One of the goals in, in this document, and I do support it, was to make sure that the design of the septic systems meet the use of the facility. So we have a lot of vacation homes in our county that have more people staying there for short term, long term than we have in marble residences. And this ordinance requires the septic system to be designed to handle that. So I support this. It goes above and beyond the Department of Ag and Natural Resources requirements, but it fits our needs, where we have a lot of these multiple use homes. So I do support it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Speak for or against? All right, I'll close the public hearing and off to the board for discussion.
Commissioner Flanagan? I, this is just something we'd ask, I think it's only to look into, it's, there's issues in certain areas where there's a lot of vacation homes. And the, the systems are failing because they can't handle the volume of the, of the F one coming out of the septic showers and so on. Thanks for the time and thanks to the other folks that volunteered their time to, to look into this and to give their input and try to remediate some of those issues.
Anyone else with any further discussion? We've got plenty of time here, aren't we? This next hearing is scheduled for nine thirty. This is the one that everybody's scared for too. Well, we'll, we'll be close to public hearing and on the item we were just discussing, and we'll take it up again at the next scheduled meeting.
Mr. Chairman, that'll be the second reading, May fourteenth at about nine thirty. We will talk.
We don't happen to have Brent Esslinger sitting out in the hallway, do we?
I, I can go check.
Would you mind?
I can also, even though today, I think that Mr. Sweets is gonna start the firewise work up at Public Safety and Services Center. So you might see some activity up there with that.
Sorry, folks, we don't want to cheat anybody out of some time if they're running late to get here.
I could also, Mr. Chairman, may I also report that we heard yesterday and got an email last night that the, you were asked to be the prime, what, sponsor applicant on a grant? For the Apple Springs Improvement District. And a gentleman, a couple of gentlemen stopped by and talked to Brenda yesterday, and they did follow up with an email last night. And they would advise you that the Apple Springs Water Works and Sanitary District, so that's the district, that political subdivision, offer the update regarding the EPA Climate Control Grant. And they report that the district has been able to obtain its own UEI number and, and other things. And based upon that change, they have decided to change the trade organization team. The district will be taking the lead on the grant application and substitute for the county. They thank you for your support through the process and ask for potentially a letter of support. And I followed up with them to ask them to put a proposed draft together.
Okay?
Good.
I guess I'll ask, is there anyone in the room that, we also have a spot on our agenda for public, public comment? Other than the item that the majority of you are here for? Does anyone else have anything else they'd like to stand up and speak to the board about? Using limited to three minutes.
Brent is here, Chairman.
Oh, perfect.
Want to have seat here, Brent?
Come on, we'll, we'll take up our ten AM item here.
Special events, beverage license, go ahead, Bruce.
You have a letter in your packet that Mr. Esslinger presented to you regarding special events. Alcohol licenses, he's here today to discuss that with you. I would defer to him now, try to offer a little information that Brenda and I have.
Okay, starting you out the floor. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
We're in Esslinger, eleven two oh one US. Okay. I guess the reason for letter, the Chamber of Commerce, the Renaissance Group, that hold the annual event here in Lead, has basically outgrown their venue. So they came to me asking if they could move through that to our resort. With that being said, kind of thinking ahead, wanted to make sure that if we were doing things, whatever, that we have the right approvals and stuff like that. I know the licenses, there's a couple of companies, one of them Shivers, in town here, I know they get a special events license for that event, where they can sell other than their facility. Spire does the meat wine proof as well. That's also here in town. With moving to the county, they've asked, you know, who can do that or whatever. So I thought it would be worthwhile to go ahead and check to make sure that would be allowed. And then when I find out that several counties, like I said, the city of Leeds, city of Deadwood offer the special events license. I know Meat County, Pennington County, when I spoke with the, one of the gals at the D O R, they said there were several counties in South Dakota that also provide that license. But it's not available in Lawrence County. There again, it's a huge community event, they usually have three to four thousand people that attend during the three day weekend. So there again, was just asking what steps, there's some of the things that we were gonna do. Number one, you know, make sure we contact the local authorities, we're gonna try to have like an onsite security person on guard. We'd also have the people that would be selling the beverages, would also be required to ID and ban, just like I do at a fine resort. So there at the end was just asking if there is a option, as things, the community continues to grow, I think probably gonna be more of an ask for this type of event. So therefore, just wanted to put something together, and we're gonna forward the commissioners and ask if there was an option.
I did a little research into this, and we talked about it some. City Spearfish does it for the pavilion, the chamber and those, those other places did it for the city park. It's not private property, and you already have a license to sell alcohol. I don't know why, why you as the property owner would want to essentially usurp your existing license for someone else to come sell liquor on your, or alcohol on your property. But that's, I mean, the fact that you don't have a license doesn't even really, I don't think applies in this case. Because you have, you can sell alcohol, and you can have a bunch of beer stands up on your property and sell it for that. And for what they're talking about, again, it was a city park, or it's like at the Armory, or something like that, a, a public place that doesn't normally have alcohol. I've, I've done it before at the pavilion, when I had a business Spearfish, and that's what happens usually there. Is it's a public facility that then they get a sponsor, then they take their license and go that route. Same with the Downtown Fridays, it was that same concept. So if it's, or if you already have a license, you can sell, you just need more.
Sell their.
And that would, can you?
Separate companies.
Yeah, right.
You've got Shivers, you've got Spider, and then you've got us.
And if, and if, if they, if they sell to a distributor, you can sell that stuff too. I don't know that it supports shit, it does alcohol.
Yeah, that, the meat wine, I think that's kind of a specialty deal, so that's not something that a multi distributor would offer as a.
Bruce? Mr. Chairman, if I may, and I will defer to Brenda too, this gets kind of confusing pretty fast. Somebody who maybe heard references to these kinds of licenses before. I think what we're talking about today is different than what you're normally accustomed to. The other kind of license you heard requests for are a license, the special license where someone can serve liquor if they serve a certain amount of food as a percentage of sales, I think, right? So this is not that. And so this is something that kind of a first impression for all of us. So Brenda and I reached out to Jamie, was it, no, not Jamie, it was.
She used to at Spearfish, but she's since retired.
Michelle, Michelle, City Spearfish. City Spearfish apparently issues this other kind of license quite regularly. And, and so, but what I think is, the typical example is that Commissioner Flanagan cited would be if the B and B would provide alcohol to a wedding at the pavilion. So the pavilion doesn't currently have obviously an alcohol license. In this case, Rex Springs has at least a malt beverage license, if not more, or wine more. And so the impediment could be they've already got a license. And so our information is that they could not be given another type of license because they already have one. And, and so I would, I would encourage the gentleman to talk to the Department of Revenue. I, I am not an expert on this at all. And so maybe a solution is, and this might be far fetched, but it's the best that I think that we can think of, is renewals for licenses are coming up in May. Is maybe don't renew your license, so you don't have a license out there. This event occurs in July, and then you come in after the fact and reapply for your malt beverage license again. Now, that might be a terrible idea, but I'm just trying to come up with solutions. And I should add, if the commission is inclined to go forward with this proposal, we would have to draft up, I think, an ordinance and so forth. Then we have an example from the City Spearfish that we could probably use, and the fee structure's pretty cheap. But we'd have to go through, I think, the public hearing process, the ordinance, first reading, second reading, and all of that. So that would take some time. We could get it done probably. We could get it done probably timely by July, but it takes a while. It makes sense, everybody?
Just for your information, I also included it in your packets. When the, this law passed back in two thousand and eleven, this was brought forth and it was taken to planning and zoning to be added to the temporary use permit and then brought back to the commission. And at that time, the Board of County Commissioners made a motion not to move forward with this type of licensing in Lawrence County.
I think that was a little bit different kind, but generally speaking, right?
But I think originally it was that if these particular licenses were going to be issued that they would have to get a temporary use permit through planning and zoning, which is kind of how it, the board wanted it to go so that planning and zoning would issue the temporary along and then it would be put in planning and zoning ordinance that that, it would be part of that to allow these special licenses. But like I said, that was a few years ago, but that's, that's where, you know, we tell people as of right now, that's where we stand and that's what we give them, is what happened back in twenty eleven.
Okay, Bruce? And then probably a wise idea to make sure that they're offered first aid there, insurance, bathrooms, provision for parking and all that kind of thing.
Yeah, there's going to be twenty to thirty different vendors that are on site. So the final is to have people park at the community center up here, while the bus runs every half hour, you know, you run people back and forth, the security guard, you know, double checking IDs and stuff like that, banning people. So I guess kind of thought about those things, you know, and put that in the information that we brought forward, so.
He probably needs a temporary use permit to hold that kind of event on this property because that's not what it was approved for.
It's worth a discussion, yes.
You might open up a can of worms.
Man, I don't think that the vendors and everything that you're talking about is a problem as long as you have the temporary use permit. It's just that you cannot have any other vendor that sells alcohol on your property because you already have a license. So it's not an allowed use because you already have a malt beverage license.
Oh, yeah, Department of Revenue around that, that probably would be part of this great event.
Yeah. Unless there's a workaround like I kind of mentioned a bit, maybe a possible workaround, maybe there's something else.
We're not, we're not aware of, but.
The Department of Revenue might be able to help out with that.
Right, actually, right.
To keep you out of trouble and help you do it.
Well, knowing we've had vendors show up here in Raleigh that aren't part of the business, they've had to get a temporary use permit, they have outside vendors on the property.
Yeah, I'd get them applying for that.
I don't see a harbor in that evidence.
So regarding the, the temporary use permit, the application can be had either online, I think, or up in planning and zoning. And Amber typically either has the discretion to issue those commonly, she will submit those to the county commission for approval. And so I have, unless I hear from you, that's probably what we would do if the application is made. I don't think it has to go through planning and zoning, so it would be presented to you at your May fourteenth meeting, assuming all those things are done.
I guess other questions, if I have not similar events, but other events where I have a group of folks to come in and rent the entire facility out for their event, does that require a special use permit?
I think if there's outside vendors involved, if you're supplying the food and the alcohol and that kind of thing, you have a wedding, I don't think that that's a thing, but you have a bunch of vendors.
Or a band outside or something like that.
We do have situations where, you know, there's an event, or we have a weekend thing, but basically we're in the whole resort, there's going to be three different bands and stuff out there. No other liquor distributors other than ourselves or others.
Probably so, we should probably have a conversation about it. I don't, I'm unaware of any complaints. That's good, right? I don't think it's ever hit the radar screen before, but we should probably look at it and talk.
Yeah, as like I said, things continue to grow, I get more and more requests from people who rent out the whole facility for their event for a weekend or whatever, so on. There again, just want to be forward, know what's required, what I need to do and stuff to maintain.
Will I further discussion on it down the road? And I think Department of Revenue would be the source for you to look into. And a visit with planning and zoning.
Sure.
Direct to what you expect.
Yeah, we can, if you were to stop up there today, we could probably get you the application. We'll get started on that upstairs, right? And they're listening online, so they probably have it ready for you. I mean, trying to get them.
All right, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. All right, we're ready for the main event. It is nine thirty. And the item before us is the first reading and public hearing for ordinance one twenty four dash zero four. Bruce, I'll have you bring us up to speed on this and then at that time we'll open the hearing.
Again, I'll defer to Amber's comments and request from her staff report when it's in the zoning meeting. There were no proponents or opponents, the public was closed and it was motion to recommend the, to the county commission. Specifically, she knows that many counties and cities that already have this in place, meaning having the Board of Adjustment Act as the approving authority for all CUPs. And I should add, I know personally that this has been in the works for at least a couple of years and just didn't get done. But I think she's accurate in that most counties and cities already do this. I understand personally, I get a very high percentage of them do it this way, I couldn't exactly tell you, but she would go on to say that the amendment would move the approval of the Board of Adjustment to the Board of Adjustment from the county commission for CUPs. And this would go along with obviously existing administrative appeals and also variances, right? Right now, that's what your Board of Adjustment does. The change would also clean up the ordinance as far as the placement of verbiage within the ordinance as well. So it does other things besides just make the county or the Board of Adjustment the approval for CUPs. Chairman Schenk asked if this would change things for the planning and zoning board. And Amber replied that, that as far as planning and zoning goes, it remains the same. I think that was a reference to the procedures, so I don't think there's any proposed change to procedures at all in terms of public hearings in front of planning and zoning, public hearings in front of county commissioners, that kind of thing that we're all familiar with, right? And, and yeah, and she says aside from that, the process would remain the same.
Okay. Would any of the planning and zoning members present here like to do any, have any further comments before we open up the hearing?
Just one thing on the, on the process, the only, we did make a slight change in the process. In the past, it's been up to the applicant to send out certified letters to all the adjacent landlords within five hundred feet, I believe. That will now be handled through the planning and, or this would propose to be handled through the planning and zoning office. The applicant still pays all the fees for the certified letters, it's just that the receipts for the letters would come back to the planning and zoning office, so then that office would know if everybody was contacted prior to the hearing, instead of having to wait until the actual hearing.
Excellent point, yes.
All right, I guess at this time, we will open it up to the public. I would ask that you please stand, state your name and address for the record and we'll go from there. Would anyone like to speak for this for or against? Yes, man, Billy, you have the floor.
Okay. I'm kind of new at this, but I do have a few questions.
Name and address, please.
My name is Judith L L B and my address is one nine nine three two dot road, skirmish.
Okay.
What are the qualifications that you will be looking at in as your selection of the people that would be on this Board of Adjustment?
The Board of Adjustment is the county commissioners.
Oh, the county.
We just done that a little earlier today. I don't know if you were here, but yeah, the foundation have always been the Board of Adjustment.
Okay. Are there any conditional use permits currently being applied for or anticipated?
I, I know, no public hearings that have been.
I know none that are being applied for, but anticipated, yeah, we have five hundred or so in the county, so they're pretty common. Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I can go up and check planning and zoning and see the deadline for the next meeting, which is next week. The agenda's been set. I think I can go and see if there's any agenda for that meeting, but I don't know.
We get a dozen or fifteen a year, everything from second house to gravel pits.
Little bit of everything, yeah.
Yeah, we, they, they do all kinds of things.
Are any of these, and I don't need a number, but related to gravel pits or graves or that?
Condition used permits or a big variety?
I, I'm not a member of the planning and zoning office, but typically I have an idea of what's going on and I'm unaware of any proposed or pending applications for any gravel pits, gold mining or anything of the sort. I could be wrong about that, but I, I've had no personal discussions or no of the discussions there.
As far as existing CUPs for gravel pits, I think we have two, maybe three?
Three or four.
Saint Ange.
There's several of them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Existing.
Yeah, so, yeah.
So since the Board of Commissioners will be this Board of Adjustment, you are responsible for approving these projects. Okay. And, and this is, this is kind of an odd question, but do any of the commissioners have a property, own a property that could be developed as a gravel pit or quarry? And if so, would they recuse themselves for such a?
There's several of us that own property that has minerals on it that I, I myself have no intention of any type of mining on my properties, but I, to be upfront and honest, I have minerals on my properties, but I have no intention of, of developing any of that.
Mr. Sleet?
Well, if the opportunity came and it did.
Mr. Chairman, if, if the question was, is if the county commission is the Board of Adjustment, and if a member of the county commission slash Board of Adjustment was going to make an application for a gravel pit, would they sit in on the decision to approve their own permit? Was that your question?
Yes.
Okay, so state law would not allow that, they'd have to recuse themselves. And, and if they, I think if they did, I can't give anybody legal advice other than the county commissioners, but if they stayed on the vote and they voted for their own, their vote wouldn't count, I think is what the law would say.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Okay, anyone else like to speak at this time or?
I'd like to comment, yes.
Name and address, please.
Best virgin, nine nine six three Marion moves for South Dakota. That I've got a little hard problem understanding why you can sit here and we elected you to make decisions, but you can turn a different hat on and you make decisions and we don't have anything to say about it. Supreme Court says that as a Board of Adjustment, the only way we can question you is take you to court. And we just proved that was not necessary. But I don't understand the fact that sitting here making decisions, we elected you to make the decision as county commissioners. And I think that should be respected from you and you should respect the people that put you here for that. Supreme Court has said that the people give you the authority here and they can also take it away. And I guess the best way to start that is let you come up and start replacing. I do however like the comment that appreciated your comments on the home state working with Forest Service. If you take Forest Service out of there and put the county commissioner in there, you'd be talking about yourself and it would fit very clever. So I just recommend you didn't pass it in front of time where you can just change your app and make a decision and then the people don't have any reaction.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else?
Charles Brown, Brooklyn City. I hope you'll remain safe. I've got a paper question.
Just speak up a little bit, I'm having trouble here.
Well, I guess my, one of my first questions is for people in the past who have applied for and been turned down for a gravel pit through the referendum process, petition and special election and so forth, will changing the rules over to a Board of Adjustment give them a second bite of the apple? Basically, since they're not applying to the county commission anymore, now they're applying to the Board of Adjustment, different hats on the same people.
Where do you go? I think I can give a semi intelligent answer to that.
We need Bruce for this, but go ahead, Commissioner.
I just, and I know what your question is, and the thing is, is I believe it kind of follows exactly what happened out at X seventeen. When something is denied under ordinance and state law, I think they have twelve months before they can reapply. So they can have as many bites a year apart as they want to attempt, I guess. I, I believe that's, that's how this would be. Since it was referred, denied, that, that they couldn't do the thing, it's not in perpetuity, isn't it, for twelve months?
I believe that's correct. I'm picking it up and I believe I can look it up. I believe state law does say that something is defeated, that there is a, a year long delay. I believe that's correct. I'll have to verify that.
So under the, under the proposed rule here, under Board of Adjustment, that's a non-referable action, from what I understand.
Court review.
It's full of court review.
Right, you go to a circuit court.
Lawyers and, and, you know, I've been involved in that in the past. It's a huge burden to place on the people that elected you and sent you here. I just don't know why we would have to have such a, such an ordinance, whether the way it was to pass this on before adjustment. It seems to work fine the way it is when not used inappropriately. Now, when you want to put a gravel pit in the middle of a neighborhood where there's children, you know, roads are getting trashed by heavy loads, you know, the dust is, is a factor. Then the people rightly passed around petition and got a special election, voted this down twice, in two instances that I'm aware of. But that'll take this out of the hands of the people, won't it? By making this a Board of Adjustment issue, unless you're going to go out and see if you can collect fifty thousand dollars for a lawyer to, to go to, you know, get a red mandamus and go through all that in a circuit court. Basically, this is a rubber stamp to, to the people who apply for it, regardless of the suitability of replacement of these, which in the past hasn't been a factor in front of the county commissioners. So I guess in, in general, what I'm saying is I'm opposed to this going to the Board of Adjustment. I don't care how many other counties have done it and a lot of them were done because of the CAFO considerations years ago. So please register me as a noble.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Eric Van Horst, two zero zero nine five bench thing, Spearfish. Did everybody on commission read that twenty one page document thoroughly?
The proposal.
Which one?
The proposal, the Board of Adjustment, that twenty one page document that everybody has.
Phil, you've got it right in front of us.
No, has everybody read it?
Planning and zoning's put a lot of time into it and I've reviewed quite a bit of this.
Speaking of planning and zoning, I spent hours.
This isn't the first reading. Okay. And then what were some of the concerns that you guys had, as I'm sure it's been redlining and stuff struck out, but in, what were some of the concerns that you guys had when you were wrapped in that?
We're, we're taking comments from you, so if you have something that you want to talk about on the document, please, I apologize for.
No, that's fine.
For doing, I mean, I don't, it's not, it's not a discussion. If you have opinions or you have things that you're concerned about, please let us know.
Right, sorry, I wasn't fine too. All right, so how would it have been different? My concern is it would be different today if those both the small and the large pit out by the on crooked bench would be going through the process. What, it, it's different. So today, if this was approved, it would bypass the public vote and the public wouldn't have any say in it. So that would have been approved. Is that, is that how I see it? Am I seeing it right?
Yeah, come on, and that. My, my of this document is it takes the three quarter vote to pass. In other words, at this committee, it'd take four, four to five. This place, we pass so many things three two. I think it puts more restriction at this level on what can get passed. And your question before about if one of the county commissioners has land for gravel pit and they sit out, now they need unanimous. And does that necessarily happen? Not a lot here, a lot of three two votes. I like it that way. That's my main like for this thing.
With the pits, do you remember what the votes were?
Yes. Unanimous or four, five, Mr. Dibert voting against the grand?
Please, please don't have a discussion amongst yourselves.
Well, if, I, I would assume you folks would be able to advise him, but because you're the ones.
Well, we're not here basically to answer a lot of questions. We want to hear from you folks. We want, we want your concerns and your comments. And this is the first reading so that we can consider all of the, all of your concerns.
So my concern was that if that had happened, it would have been, if this was in place, it would have been pushed through versus going to public vote. I just wanted to make sure I'm understanding that correctly. Because that would be my concern, but if I'm misunderstanding, I want that to be around
Bruce will.
So, so I think normally with a Board of Adjustment, we're accustomed to those being administrative appeals and variances, the supermajority is required. I think statute says that when Board of Adjustment is considering a CUP, it's a simple, it's a simple majority of those, of those voters present. So, I think, I think that means at least three out of five have.
And then this would change that to four out of five.
No, it would be three out of five. No per conditions.
Oh. So, just to wrap up my comments, I'd be opposed to it with the understanding that both those pits would have been approved with the Board of Adjustment, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak at this time? Go ahead.
Okay, unfortunately, I have questions, but I, and, and, and I realize you won't answer them, but.
Name and address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kristen Wing, A.I.N.G., two-two-nine-eight-six Cedar Berry Avenue, Spearfish. I, I think I have the, the same frustration that all the folks do here. The way this, what is the process where we can actually have a dialogue? As many of us will be stating or have stated, we elect you and we elect you to represent us. And if you disagree with us on a particular issue, I would think that it would be respectful to take some time to explain why you disagree. I actually had a conversation with Mr. North Star out there. Why can't we sit down and talk about what the ramifications are? All we have are, is a, a mechanism, a process whereby we can tell you how we feel. But we don't know if there's something that we should know that you think you know. So, there's no dialogue, there's no explanation to us. We have to couch our comments in a way that we might get, so like an eye roll or something from you, so that we know how you feel about it. But if you're representing us, why don't you represent us? Why don't you say, we hear that there are issues on both sides, and maybe we need to have a study commission that comes in, figures out where all the possible gravel is, where they're located. Yes, I do understand that an individual like Mr. Sleep might say, oh, yeah, I've got gravel on my property and I would like to develop that. I realize we don't all have that. But I do hear that from, from Sundance all the way to Rapid City, this, this, you know, this gravel scene goes. So, I guess I could probably petition for my front yard too. You know, I mean, where, where, where do you listen to us? And, and where do you have a concern for our property values?
We're listening to you today. And we have answered some questions.
Well, you, you, you have answered some, but do, do you, I'm, I'm asking a question again. Do you see my point? That why can't there be some sort of interim where, I mean, this is a, a process whereby we elect you and we expect you to represent us. But we know from what we went through already, and, and what Mr. Van, the question Mr. Van Horn asked, we know exactly how you're gonna vote. I can predict, probably, I'm gonna be 99.99% accurate on how you would vote if those two issues came out, came up under the Board of Adjustment. Now, I also do know, because it was out in the paper and comments, that folks who attend these, this meeting here, that there was a real concern that we, the citizens, by, by exercising our right, cost the county $30,000. Well, my feeling is at that point, no, you cost the county $30,000 because you didn't step back, let us all talk about it. But now, by going through this Board of Adjustment arrangement, now that you're, you're gonna make darn sure that you don't have to pay $30,000 anymore. We have to, we have to go get a lawyer, we have to go to all the trouble. Why is that right when you're here to protect us also? Why do you approve developments and then later go, oh, well, it doesn't really matter? You, you, maybe you need to step back, look at the whole county, decide what you want to do with it, if, if, if the issues would come to you. And make a decision based on everyone who's a taxpayer, everybody who, who votes, everybody who lives here and raises a vote.
Thank you, Bruce. I'm looking at seven-eighteen eighty-four, it's on the page, on the question about the waiting period. And so, I think this is the answer. So, it says, no question contained in a referred or initiated ordinance for resolution may be voted upon again within one year from the date of the election there on seven-eighteen eighty-four. So, okay. That wasn't much on to my. Yeah, all right. Anyone else like to speak at this time? Go ahead.
Kerry Zimmerman, eight-zero-seven, South Thirty-second Street. I would just kind of ask for all the Commissioners' attention when I'm talking with you. Or not.
What, what, what's that all about?
I just would like.
Does that write your name on a piece of paper? Is that what's excited over there?
Yeah.
Kerry, come over to the table, please, so we can hear you better.
I can speak louder from right here.
Thank you.
I would just like everyone to please consider everyone here, because previously with the gravel pits, I feel like I can confidently say many of us didn't feel like we were heard. We were over there, I don't know how many of us talked, and then at the end, you brought out a piece of paper that said you were approving the gravel pits. And many of you had your head down when many of us were talking. With that being said, who's gonna go through these variances and find that they're detrimental to the public interest and welfare? Last time we presented that, I don't feel like it was heard, so who's gonna do that now? With that being said, I oppose this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak at this time?
Tim Comer, twenty-five, twenty-one, Chalk Terrace Circle. I spent a lot of time going through this ordinance. I support this ordinance. I think this ordinance clearly spells out the process that needs to be followed. There are other counties that are doing this, including Pennington County. I think this also ties in well to existing state laws and state regulations accordingly. So, I dare to say I support this.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman, I've learned that there are two pending CUP applications, but no new extractive industry applications at this time.
Say that one more time.
There are two pending CUP applications now, but no extractive industry applications at this time.
Anyone else like to? Go ahead.
Naomi Merchant, one-nine-nine-four-one, Hopper Road. I oppose this, the changes made to the ordinance. The first observation is that adding this Board of Adjustment to grant the conditional use permits, it's a major addition, and especially learning that the County Commissioners are the Board of Adjustment. I really am not sure why that had to be done. So, I'm going to try to phrase my questions into comments. I'm curious, who and when initiated this significant change? Like, did it happen after the special election? And what incident or problems aided a need for this change? I mean, it looks like, in my opinion, a partout for friends and family. And it also appears to be a loophole to limit the citizens' ability to petition tough decisions by the County Commissioners and circumvent the appeals process. So, the, when a Commissioner loses their seat, does the incoming, they're also like automatically on the Board of Adjustment, right? There's no.
The Commissioners are the Board of Adjustment.
Okay, so.
So, just, just to clarify, Mr. Chairman, the Board of Adjustment is set by the County Commission at the start of every year. That's the first meeting of the year when we are assigning committee responsibilities to each of the Commissioners. We also set the Board of Adjustment at that. And so, that would include any new coming Commissioners.
And so, any of the vaults would cover the decision, right? Okay, thank you. And is, it would be appreciated if we could have a forum where our questions are answered and this ordinance is explained in plain English to, so that the citizens can engage in a cooperative dialogue. All this legalese is difficult to keep straight, and I feel that we shouldn't have to pay a lawyer, you know, $2.75 an hour up to interpret something that the Commissioners have put forward. And then I also find it troubling that throughout this document, that County Commissioners have been replaced with the Board of Adjustment throughout this whole document. And I'm not sure, like, the accountability standards and how that has changed. And, oh, on page six, the procedure for cups for extractive industry. Why was the extractive industry particularly singled out in this when it wasn't before? It looks suspect to me. And also, there are thirty-four cups for add, add one land. And so, that, that's my concern, is there are thirty-four cups, yet this extractive industry got singled out. And, and, and reference to, like, this is a topic, but the sewage topic, I mean, there's a cup for sewage facility. So, if there's a problem, get somebody with land, put up a solid waste facility, and there's one for recreation. So, the gentleman sitting here could just put a cup in for using someone's land to have his venue. I mean, I did read all the other cups, which is, which is why I'm so, so concerned about this one. And yes, I mean, it would affect me if, say, North Star or Crowell decide to come in and, you know, shortly after this, this decision is made, come in and just hold those, the, the same people, yeah. So, so, going back to the 12 months to, to reapply, is that at the same site, Bruce, or?
I cannot give you legal advice, and I've studied it, but generally speaking, I would reserve the right to change this. I would say yes.
Okay. Okay, that, that I just wanted that.
Subject to change, but.
It's under state law.
I think that's what that's intended to be, is, is you have to wait a year, and I think, yeah.
One of your earlier questions, um, this didn't just come about since the issues with the quarry. As Mr. Tisdale stated, the planning and zoning's been working on these ordinances for several years now, trying to clean up language and make changes that benefit the community. So, it's not, this didn't just happen overnight.
That, that was something that I had asked, that I have written here, is how does granting the Board of Adjustment, how does, bringing them authority to make these decisions, like, what does it solve? Like, how does this benefit? How does all these new things benefit the Lawrence County citizens? Like, that's the type of questions that if we could, you know, have a dialogue with Bruce maybe, or, or someone to, to explain, like, why is this good for us? Other than, I mean, it just looks like it's a, an expedient means to an M. And that's comments like that.
I can comment on one thing, so I think all the changes where you see County Commission being substituted for Board of Adjustment, that's for consistency purposes, it has to be that way, otherwise it gets confusing, it, it wouldn't work legally. Regarding, I think, the extractive industry part being, as you would say, kind of called out specifically. So, the reason for that is, see, extractive industry CUPs are like other CUPs, they're generally governed by the CUP procedure. But if you look in this ordinance book, and we all know that there are special rules regarding extractive industry applications in particular, right? So, what that reference is meant to do is to point out that, that, hey, if you're applying for an extractive industry permit, you have to go to that section of this book and meet those, those qualifications. Those are the same that, that you're familiar with from before, right? So, that just shows you that, that those rules apply. Does that make sense?
No. It doesn't make sense in that, what about the other cups and, and their rules in the ordinance in that book that you have?
They're, they're governed separately, according to what zoning they're in and et cetera. So, it's kind of extraordinary, there are only a few exceptions where there are special rules for a particular use. Windows come to mind, extractive industry come to mind. So, the County Commission long ago adopted special rules, special scrutiny for certain activities. Extractive industry is one of those, I would say, arguably. And so, nothing changes in that regard, there's no changes in terms of the rules that apply in that regard.
Okay. So, it's, so I just want to, so it was just a coincidence that it just happened to come up. Shortly thereafter, the special election.
Well, and if I can, I can add too, from my personal knowledge, that this change has been discussed long before these gravel pit CUPs came into existence. I think the impetus for it was, is that most, as I understand it, most counties and maybe cities have already switched to this procedure where they're having their Board of Adjustment approve their CUPs. As I understand it, we are one of the few, maybe even a handful, maybe even one or two, again, don't hold me to that, of counties that, that have not changed our procedure. In fact, there are some smart lawyers, and me included in there, that would argue, whether we know it or not, because of the law changes that happened, creating the Board of Adjustment, that we, we may be all under a false pretense that our County Commission is actually approving CUPs. There are some that would argue that today, although we're not doing it that way, it is actually a Board of Adjustment issue. And so, there's a question of law about that as well. And so, for consistency purposes, you know, from a legal standpoint, it makes it clear for me i- if that change happens. You might disagree with that, but I'm looking at it from a legal perspective. Makes sense?
Sure.
Okay.
So, is there, well, I mean, I don't feel that my, my comment about having a forum where questions, that you guys can't answer questions, and how, how, what is the process for us to get these questions answered about what is in this, in these changes? Like, do we really have to go out and pay for a lawyer, like, no one here is gonna talk to us about it, like, to have a cooperative dialogue? I mean, I don't think anyone, we just want answers.
I could be wrong, but that would be in the work group discussions in planning and zoning when they're working on it, since for years. Tim?
Yeah.
And, and several Commissioners on here, and I was planning on going back years ago, but we tried to get, and there was something, and we talked earlier about, about the wastewater where they got some engineers and then some surveyors, and they commented. Well, there's a lot of times when we're working on, when that board is the one that handles the building of this, they will talk to, they'll be public input, public hearings, public discussion, or they'll get certain people with specializations from different areas to come in and talk, and, and citizens that are concerned. And we did, actually, we did that when we were, when the discussions came up with the gravel pit. I believe Mr. Turgeon was on, was, somebody had some discussion and some concerns on that, some of the other folks. It didn't go, we didn't make the decision that you wanted us to make, that input was, was. Well, that's a discussion for after the fact. Yes, the after-action report is another game, well, you kind of did when you, when you had it referred, so that was, we knew exactly what the decision was. But that's, that's what it is, is if you go to the planning and zoning, when you're having those discussions on, you're doing and revising some ordinance, to have the, the back and forth, that's what it is. That would be, might, maybe I'm incorrect, that's what we've, what we had done in the past, and I believe we continue it.
Yes, how do I get on the working group?
I'm not on planning and zoning anymore, so.
All right, is the public, can we come to working group?
You're welcome to come to.
Public's welcome to come to any.
And I apologize, I kind of went a little.
When we, when we were discussing this, there was opportunity for public comment. That was when we were doing this.
Gentlemen, thank you very much, thank you.
I, I think, I think it's true, we went back and looked at the agendas when the planning and zoning board was studying this, that it was on the agenda, it was called out for what it was, and then, of course, there was a public hearing in front of planning and zoning. And I don't think anybody attended, and they tried to reflect that as well, maybe nobody knew about it, I don't know. But there have been opportunities for folks to participate.
It's the same public, honestly.
Yes, you were finished?
Yes, other than please.
Who else would like to speak?
Don Lutz, six-twenty-nine Bridge Garden Court, Spearfish. I just wanted to, like, address this issue. I did review the planning and zoning minutes, and the first that I saw, maybe I didn't go far back, was February first, when there was a mention in the minutes that there was a discussion about making this change. And that there, that that was the first time I saw any drafts of this, was this February. So, maybe there are older things out there, but that's what I saw. And I'm, and I'm opposed for the reason that the public have the opportunity to.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Sir? You've already spoke once.
Yeah, this is just a clarification.
Okay.
Point out, uh, in the old chapter two, ours, the duties of the Board of Adjustments. A Board of Adjustment shall be appointed by the County Commissioner, that's been struck out. And new, new wording, the Lawrence County Commissioner shall provide for the appointment of the Board of Adjustment. Very minor difference, I would think. My question is.
That's state law.
Well, the state law doesn't require that the Commissioners themselves wear all the hats, that's the question. Now, it would be possible for the County Commissioners to appoint. Now, it would be possible for the county commissioners to appoint, like, a couple of non-county commissioners to sit on this board to give the appearance of a democracy in the House. I mean, obviously, you could appoint, you know, the owner of Western Construction or Reddymix, Reddymix as those members, but I think it would be probably a little more democratic if you chose from the public at large to sit on a couple of these seats of the Board of Adjustment, should this pass. I don't know what you think about that, and I can't ask you. But that's my comment.
Well, I might have been wrong when I said you couldn't ask questions, because we can have some dialogue. I just want to keep it kind of orderly. So I apologize for that. No, you're very orderly. You're just fine, sir, thank you.
So is there an answer for my question? But there.
It could certainly be considered.
Historically, it hasn't been, however, planning and zoning has got a bunch of. I'll use that term as a quote, non-county commissioners. I think usually we have a commissioner and alternate currently, I think we have two, just because of the way the board happened. But the planning and zoning board, you get people on that. Tim is not elected, he's been appointed by the county commissioner to sit on that board, has been for a few years. And there's a bunch of people, we got ag people, we've got business folks, there's all kinds of folks that sit on that planning and zoning board that is the organizing step of the commission use permit.
So if you have the absolute right to provide for the appointment of a Board of Adjustment, it doesn't have to be a county commissioner. It could be someone from outside government.
Correct.
Yes.
I hope you'll consider that.
All right. Mr. Aberley, you wanted to.
Sorry. Aberley, one 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 seven one. There's a process for getting a conditional use permit, and usually there's ordinances applied, whether it's extractive or not. And they're well-written, and it's the job of the people here to evaluate whether a project's compliant. And we elect them to do that. And we elect, we have a planning and zoning board, and there is room for public input in all those places. And a responsible operator is looking for input anyway. I think it's, everybody here also opens mail and answers the telephone, too. There's lots of places for public input in the process. What people in the business, and I am in the business, want to know is what's the process? And if you keep changing and moving the ball as you go along, nobody invests in a gravel quarry, and we all need gravel. And so somewhere along the line, you're going to have to have a gravel quarry somewhere. And it's, we elect these people to do research and listen to these people, but it's a process. And maybe there's a better way to do it, but there is a process for it. And it's my understanding that this, what's proposed here is more compliant with state law than what we have right now. And that's my input.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Sir?
My name's Kevin Farmer, eleven seven ninety-four Crook City Road. I believe it was six or seven years ago, Western Construction applied for a CUP permit directly across from my property. If you want to refer to that, when that happened. I think some other things to consider there is, once every twelve months, we as the group of the community that live there right now, who can't spend fifty thousand dollars on an attorney every twelve months. So therefore, the guy with the most money wins. And fifty thousand dollars in a gravel pit is nothing. Still do that four or five times. In fact, they know we can't afford them. They'll keep coming to the well until I get what they want. I live in a, the way the mine was drawn out there, the entrances and stuff like that, the driveway entrance would have came out a half a block from my driveway. And I don't know who would you may live around the quarry right at the moment, but Simon's contracting up on the corner is approximately about a mile away. And I hear crushing all day long, I hear backup alarms all day long, and depending on which way the wind's blowing. I might have to wash my car every two or three days. And if that mine was to move down in front of my house, even though it's a three-quarters of a mile to the south, in the summertime when that, we get these nice winds that everybody loves about the Black Hills, I would probably be lucky to get any rest during the day at seven o'clock in the morning due to backup alarms and the crushing. And that makes a shit ton of noise. And I think this is what a lot of other people are concerned about. And not to mention that once you decide to put in a mine right there, whether it does at the moment or not, but you will affect everybody's property. And I'm sure just like myself, everybody else just got to notice it. Their taxes going up, and I don't want to have to pay more taxes for more noise. And for sure as hell, I don't want to spend fifty thousand dollars every twelve months like the same damn program.
Okay.
So that's all I got to say.
Thank you. We're not aware of any pending, pending requests coming in at this time for any of this type of stuff. So we can just, I guess, stick to the topic here. What, anyone else want to speak for you?
I, if I could make a comment, how are we living in that place where you're at?
How long have I lived there? Forty-nine years.
Forty-nine years. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak at this time? Okay, sir?
Dennis forty-two zero zero two-three, Crow Peak Bench Room. It's more than a mine that we're talking about here, nobody's mentioned. One of the things I want to talk about is this, item two dash fifteen dash zero nine. Why was that added? And why don't we just strike this? I think that makes everybody here a lot more comfortable. It looks. The page six.
Would you repeat it again?
It's two dash fifteen point zero nine.
Page six. Okay. Procedure for conditional use permit?
Yes. I'm trying to find out why this is added to this. It looks like the back door is here, guys. I would ask that you strike this from the, from this documentation. And I think everybody here would be a whole lot happier if that wasn't on there. Looks like you're specifying the quarries.
It does. And the reason is it goes back to the subdivision ordinance that has a whole section on different requirements. Condition use permit could be for a special resort or a bed and breakfast. It could be for a restaurant in a residential zoning during rally.
A timing of this document, this statement.
Sure. It's just, again, referring to a larger, a much larger ordinance that's still in the.
I'm trying to explain where these people come. The timing on this is terrible.
Sure.
We've just bought a lot, spent a lot of money on a boat turning this quarry down. And it looks, it's very obvious that this is not being done in our favor.
Like I stated earlier, there are no pending permits being applied for right now. We know of none.
So, so chapter nineteen of the zoning book refers to conditional uses generally. And as I referenced earlier, this is the same answer I offered before, I'll say it again. In this case, because it's an extractive industry, there are special rules found in chapter twenty that apply. And so it's meant to say, to just point out that this isn't an ordinary CUP for a campground, for example. For campgrounds, we don't have special ordinances for campgrounds. Those get decided according to other criteria. But for extractive industries, there are specific rules in chapter twenty, and those are the same rules that you heard discussed in those public hearings last year. They all apply, those are not changing. This just references that, A, if you're an applicant, you should expect that all of those things are going to apply in terms of your application, procedures, the buffer zone waivers, annual report requirements, et cetera, et cetera. All of that, hollow plan.
Lots of specific requirements for extractive industry CUP that they have to address a lot of other issues or potential issues other than a normal CUP. Like I said, campground doesn't have to provide a reclamation. The CUP extractive industry has to provide a reclamation.
And this document just references, in addition, I mean, in addition to this process, there's still those existing ones that we have to go through, that we went through before. And that's why it's in there, because it's saying it's constructive notice to the people in the industry. You still have those, all those several pages where the information you have to provide that we also need to consider for health and safety, for, well, life safety issues, but also for noise, for dust, for all the other. So that's, that's why, I mean, we could take it out, but it's, we're giving them notice to say there's a lot more involved than just this process if you're going to try to do a gravel pit or a mine or anything else.
We have other ways of providing safety. We got ocean, we got Amish.
Sure. But again, we're saying.
Provide by that, whether, whether you vote, however.
Sure. No, you're exactly right.
There's, who's got more power than Amish and ocean?
Right. But this just says, just so you're aware, this is the process, but this big brick of additional requirements, you have to pass. So it's just noticed in here that you also have that other stuff that you've done in the past historically. You have to reference that as well.
Sir, if I put myself in your place, Dennis, and I'm the advocate for your position, to be fair, I'm a lawyer, I'm not on anybody's side, but I'm on your side. That's, that's not a smart idea to take that out, I don't think. That, that's to be noticed, people are making applications, and all of these other rules apply. I don't think that's what you would want to do. You're up, you can make your own decision on that, right? But they would still apply, but that notice is just giving people, well, it's giving them notice of that fact. And so I think what you would suggest maybe is if that was taken out, all of that would go away. Okay, so if all of that goes away, then, then there's no socioeconomic study call for, there's no, there's no this, there's no that, there's no special rules for an application for extractive industry, but rely wholly on the application for a normal CUP, for a campground, and we know that they're not the same thing, right? So there's, there's just absolutely no trick involved in that at all.
Okay, we're in the Black Hills, there's a lot of history here. Why do we not require an archaeological study? It's ever been brought up. You're in an area.
Do you want me to talk? Do you want me to dress up from extractive industry standpoint?
I'm from Crow Peak Bench area, and there's a lot of artifacts. I, yeah, nothing was mentioned about a archaeological study. Everything around the hills has to do with archaeology.
Homer answered that, because he's familiar with it.
I'm familiar with it, because all that process is addressed at the state level through state applications, with the state historic preservation office. Even for an exploration permit, archaeological, level-one assessment starts and it may require a level-three assessment.
Oh, you forget about that on that mine up there then? Hung ones, Crowls?
Mr. Chairman, I think we're kind of getting away from what the disordnance is, the comments. So in addition to the state or county permit, you would need a state permit to have a gravel pit. And so I think, what Mr. Homer is saying is that those things get covered under the state permits. They have SHPO, I believe, and they have the folks that do those kinds of things. We don't have the expertise for that, right? And so I think in most cases, you're citing that wasn't done, they were waiting to see if they were to get their county permit before they did that. I'm not an expert on that, but just.
Okay, you have further comments?
Yeah. We're here because we don't like, first off, this comment, this one, the condition use permit for the extractive industry, we've explained that. But there's also another issue, and that's trust of our county commissioners. We've had one commissioner that went to a meeting, and the first things he says is, I'm against it. That's why I'm going to vote. That's not, that's not proper use of your seat. We have another commissioner that goes to a meeting, tells the people he's not going to vote for the quarry. Goes into the meeting, and he votes for the quarry. We have another commissioner that, we talked about building permits, and he tells me that. They don't need any of them, but he turns me in for one.
Say that again?
A commissioner that, he was building, or he was building, and was ignoring a city condition used to me. Or not, but a building permit. And then I get turned in for one.
Well, I'm, myself, not familiar with any of these things that you're speaking of, so.
Better so than what you're letting on. Then we have another commissioner that puts in paper that he's for the quarry. Your decisions are made up before you ever go to your meetings. It's a, it's a, it's a trust issue, guys. And I think if these people could trust you, they wouldn't be here.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else like to speak? We got a new one in the back here, sir, and then I'll get back to you.
Dylan Guster, two zero eight seven Bench Lane. So on the boat deal, so that quarry was never went to boat, so it was pulled before it went to a city boat, right? So that means that your deal doesn't matter. They can, they can apply for it whenever they want. So it's not like there's a year.
Are you making reference to the Larson pit?
Yep.
Yeah, they did pull that, and yeah, they could reapply at any time, but I haven't heard anything in the works that they're going to do so.
Okay. And then one more question. When it refers to, like, family member or whatever owning land with it, does that still go back to, like, if a county commissioner has family on the company that's trying to do the pit? Are they out, so they can't vote either?
All right, I'll, I'll answer that question. I know where you're headed with this. Let's say Crowls applied for a permit again. My son is the regional manager for Crowls in Wyoming, South Dakota. But due to that fact, I would recuse myself from any of the proceedings. Is that answer your? Okay. Which I, which I did last time. Okay, anyone else like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Sharon Jacobs, twenty-two thirty-nine, Sunset, and Shore's Fear Fish. My concern here is no one's brought up any of the health factors. I don't know if there's going to be a study done. We have toxins coming out, you have issues with respiratory problems that no one seems to be addressing. You know, we're already dealing with lead in the water and fear fish and a few other things. So I'm concerned for myself, I'm concerned for my children, I'm concerned for my grandchildren, that nobody's taking this in real time.
Okay.
So I am one thousand percent opposed to this.
Okay. All right. It's noted, anyone else? Sir, you had a comment.
Yeah, Kevin Farmer, again, five seven nine two. I think Mr. Sleep was going to refer to this. He asked me how long I've lived where I live. I said twenty-nine years. And the thing being, why I haven't been up here complaining about the mine that Simon says up there is because it was there before, and I was quite aware. However, that doesn't mean I'm one string of them going along the hillside right there. And what's happened, or what happened seven years ago, or whatever, unbeknownst to commissioners or the county that they expanded their mine over onto Dwayne Carson's project. And Dwayne has since passed away. And when Dwayne passed away, his sister took over the property. And they just made a little side deal and just slid right over onto Carson's, which would have, should have, and was supposed to have a CUP in order to be able to do that. I think it's, they got left. Yeah. And now I know for a fact that they're out around there, and they want to mine the other half of that eighty acres that's right there. So they're going to be coming through there, taking down that tree belt, kind of separates his old ranch from the whole entire world to see what the quarry looks like. And from what I understand, seven years ago, they were going to have to apply for a CUP to expand that section. Well, we never even got a CUP to extend the first section.
I'm not, I'm not familiar with the earlier part, but I have heard that they're possibly needing more, more area, and they will have to get an additional or a new permit for that.
Haven't heard either.
Yeah. And there again, we haven't, no one's come forward on that either.
It's, it's growing towards my house, the way it's going. I mean, I tolerated it because they were where they were, but. I mean, I, I tolerated it because they were where they were, but they're coming down the road. And the noise is gonna get worse, the dust is gonna get worse.
All right, thank you, anyone else, sir?
Uh, thanks for, Eric Vanmore, two zero nine five bench lane, thanks for answering some of these questions. Would the commissioners consider removing the extractive industries out of the document?
I mean, well-
That would eliminate gravel, gold mining.
Well, from this, doesn't mean that it's not the same as it was, it takes constructive notice out of it.
I don't mean from a legal, like, this, the, the notice standpoint, but just removing it from the Board of Adjustments and have it-
Well, I suppose, we'll consider those permits, sir, thank you.
And then have, just a quick follow-up to that, do, you, we've mentioned, or you guys have mentioned other counties have adopted the Board of Adjustments. Have they excluded, um, extractive industries that you know of? That's a further question, not that I, I don't know, I don't know.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just one follow-up question.
Me?
Two commissioners on-
Me, please.
Judith Lamb, okay, one nine nine three two, Gomber Road. If two commissioners recuse themselves from voting as the Board of Adjustment, how many commissioners have to vote on a CUP to give it approval to be active?
Sure, I agree, that's a tricky question, I think the answer is three.
All three, okay.
I think the statute refers to, again, I'd have to look at it, says of those members present and voting, and so I think what that refers to is, um, it can be different, um, I think that referred to all the, all the potential members, so I think that would be three out of five. I haven't looked at that for a while, so don't hold me on that. But typically, the county commissioners also have a local board that requires at least three to pass anything. And so that would factor in as well, that can't supersede state law, but I think it would be at least three. Mr. Chairman, you'd like to speak?
Yeah, Lester, in nine nine six three, Surfish. Uh, some of the things that you might consider, uh, from what we learned, is I question, if I meet all those qualifications you talked about in nineteen and twenty, why do we have thirty-three conditions on it? You put thirty-three conditions on, now mine, in the very first one, was you have to follow the law. Now, what kind of condition is that? The very first condition is you have to follow all the laws and ordinances.
All county, state, and federal laws.
Why should that be a condition?
It's the same reason when you buy coffee at McDonald's, it says, caution, this is hot.
Yeah, but that shouldn't be, sir, who's gonna enforce these kind of number of conditions? And if you go down through there, there's a lot of those.
Well, the county stays on top of conditional use prevents. If someone has a complaint, they, they come in and they, they gotta fill out a form to make the complaint, and, and it's addressed.
All I'm saying is, it might get some consideration or reevaluating these rules, so they're already taken care of, that you don't need thirty-three. A condition, or you should just be for the one man, like, one or two of you, not thirty-three, who in the world going to enforce that? Got sheriff's office enough to do it? Who's gonna follow all that stuff? That should already, if you gotta follow the law, that should already be settled.
Well, our planning office tails up a lot of the-
So, you know, I guess, saying that, you know, you might wanna sit down and just kinda reevaluate some of that stuff and the requirements. If I meet all your regulations on that, I shouldn't have any conditions on, thirty-three conditions on my permit.
Anyone else like to speak at this time? Yes, ma'am.
I actually just want to dovetail on the comments.
Please state your name, Margaret.
Uh, I'm sorry, Kristen Wing, two two nine, Cedar Berry Avenue.
Thank you.
Uh, the, 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 uh, question that, that the, we later raised about the health, when we went through this process before, so this same group plus more people were involved in the planning and zoning meetings, including a site visit, and the, the Board of Commissioners meetings, we had copious documentation, they have all of it. We have studies from around the country, uh, I actually have a background in, in, in medical research.
Ma'am, would you address those parts?
I, I, I actually have, have a, a background in medical research. So that was brought up, that is why I think we were successful with our petition, and we were successful with the election, because people who moved to the Black Hills are somewhat health-conscious, we like to be out. Uh, we do, we do recognize we've got wind that's gonna blow the, 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 the dust that's out there. You know, there are, i- this is not a perfect environment for somebody who worries about all those things, I think. But that was of concern to all of us, and if we have to go this route again, um, which it sounds like we can't, uh, but i- if we have to go to port or whatever, then some of those issues will be brought out, but that's what brings everybody out, it's the noise, it's the health issues, it's the property values, we had a whole-
Children's, excuse me.
I'm sorry?
Children's.
Yes, yes, we, you know, it's, it's children and grandto, it's the future. Uh, so basically, it was immediate profit versus the health of our community.
Okay, you, you stated the word can, uh, there's not been any decision made on the ship. This is just the first reading and gathering information, and your comments will carry it over to the next meeting, no decisions will be made today.
I, 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 I do understand that. I think we're just, as, as the other gentleman said about trust, uh, we've had five or so meetings on this already, we've had to go through a long process. I have no reason to believe that anything has changed, because nobody on the board has changed. So that's where we're feeling frustrated.
Okay, sir?
You know, Old and Coastal, fifty fifty-five, Hillside Drive. And my concern is, why do we need another quarry at that location when there's other quarries that supply aggregates or gravel to that area? And, you know, so, how many right on are in that vicinity currently?
Okay, well-
The service account.
As I stated before, there's nothing before us, nobody's requested anything at this time, so, uh, I can't answer that question.
Cause I involve material from two locations, myself, from two quarries in that area. So, you know, you want every other mile, every two miles, every three miles. The benefit I would see is the county to spread gravel on those roads, but apparently Kroll looking for a better source, less expensive, or maybe the mileage.
Okay, anyone else, ma'am?
Uh, Don, with six twenty-nine, Bridgewater Court. I just wanted to follow up, I think, uh, first you said that there's other things besides extractive industries that have special rules, like windmills. So why aren't we mentioning windmills in here too? If that's the reason why you're mentioning it, to include those rules and give them quotas, why wouldn't we then be-
Fair, it's a fair point.
Adding all those industries.
It's a fair point, and it doesn't mean that they don't apply, but it's, yeah, it's a fair point.
One and not others that have special-
I think the last time we actually used that was for Charlie Brown, I think, for his windmill. And so it doesn't, it doesn't get used that often, so I think we forget about it.
But there may be other things.
That's a fair point.
Okay, Mr. Brown, did you have another comment, sir?
I have one last comment.
Okay.
It's-
Charlie Brown, address?
I'm sorry.
Name and address, Brenda's trying to keep track of the minutes here.
Timber and Longwood.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I think probably the main reason that so many people come to these and object to, um, these permits being issued, is because there's no examination of the appropriateness of issues. There's, there's all sorts of objective reasons and, and ways to, to judge whether a permit should be, but that's not one of them. You know, they, I, I understand that the businesses, you know, that want this gravel, this product, wanna get it as close as they can, but it's not appropriate to site these, um, these businesses in neighborhoods, in subdivisions, where you have, like, in my own experience, they wanted to put this thing right in the middle of a bunch of million-dollar homes in San Antonio. Um, and the, and the biggest objection, I guess, I had, I wasn't, I'm not against gravel. We need gravel, you know, we needed to make concrete, natural, or whatever. But we don't need it to be so close as to maximize the profits of the, of the people that need it. You can pay a couple bucks more in freight to get it from maybe a gravel pit on the north side of the interstate. Um, so the, and that's nowhere included in here as a, as a study or even a question of the appropriateness of the sighting of these, of these facilities. So I guess that's, there's not a question in there, that's just my, just my thoughts on that.
Thank you. There, there, it'll see anyone else? Anyone else like to speak?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a statement on that. Uh, part of the problem is that, uh, they mined the gravel on the road and outside the edge of the road going up to, uh, Gobbler, Gobbler Rooster, whatever the name of this. And, uh, that started all, and they didn't even come here and ask to do that, is what I'm starting mining there. And that's not very far from, from where, where you live or close to it.
Where was it sent?
What's that?
Where did you send?
Wild Turkey, I think.
Wild Turkey, uh, road there going up the hill.
Years ago.
Yeah, it was, one too many years ago, but, uh, that, that was a concern. And, uh, I, uh, on my, on my behalf, like, uh, I could, uh, we live as close to Edwards as bit, or have land as close to him as, as these people, you do around here. And, uh, we've never had any trouble, never had a sick cow or a sick person or anything up there. We have a well up there, that we got water from, and that's, and there's, you're saying things that aren't really, uh, true here. Or that, just a gentleman, they all back there.
I haven't said it.
Okay.
Yes. I'm at nine thirty.
Anyone else?
Joey Brown. To your original, okay. I worked for Centennial Quarry. And I gotta tell you guys, if there isn't one of you sitting here, you gotta remember who Dr. Bodden was. He put more stuff in the pioneer about how dirty we were. I wouldn't like a bill of hay going out across there, cause it's got nothing but limestone beds. I watched it, and I feel sorry for anybody who's in the new, uh, apartments going in, the elderly apartments going in there, I feel sorry for them, they're gonna, Centennial continues the way it is, they're gonna eat dust for quite a while.
All right, thank you, anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Naomi, we're at one nine nine four, White Gobbler Road. We bought our land fifteen years ago, and looked at it years prior, so I don't understand what you mean about it. I think we would have never purchased like this.
What, I think, what, what he was talking about was when Wild Turkey was being developed, they didn't have to come in and really get a full-blown mining permit to, to, uh, crush their own gravel for their own development. There was a lot of issues with it when they, when they did it at that time. I think that's what Richard makes me reference to.
I understand, but that was before the houses were built. I mean, it's almost, they were probably-
Anyone else?
Judith Lamb, one nine nine three two, Gomber Road, just one more question. The gentleman here mentioned architectural study. Archaeological. Well, what about an environmental study?
That's, that's all part of it.
But is it done independently? Is it independently by a professional, wherever a quarry is presented to it first?
Okay, we're gonna let-
I'll, I'll answer from extractive industry, third party, do the study, and report, you say, results of that study.
Okay, any, any other comments or questions at this time? Anyone else? Anyone else, this is the last opportunity, folks, because we will close the public hearing today and, and, uh, we'll bring this up again at the next meeting. Your comments have all been put down in the minutes, and-
Do you anticipate a vote at the next meeting?
Um, I don't know. I don't know what, it could happen, it could, I guess.
I just have a question.
Yes.
Uh, for those who have not spoken, can we do a show of hands, at least, to give you an idea of how many people are actually opposed to this?
Or, or you can just sign that sheet, so we have that record be, that sheet wasn't necessarily absolutely if you were gonna speak, but if you'd signed that sheet that we have here to let all of you that were here. But yeah, we'll, we can do the show of hands, how many are in the room that are against it? Okay, thank you. I think it's very unanimous. Anyone else, one more time, anyone else that would like to speak at this time?
Yes, ma'am. Erica Douglas, thirty-seven twenty-six, Spring Creek Lane, I obviously care about this county greatly, but I, I forget who, I think it was Mr. Ford, he asked about striking the part about not being able to appeal. I think that's something that should be heavily weighed upon. Uh, this is America, it isn't our first amendment right petition of our government. And also, with the Board of Adjustment being the, uh, county, county commissioners, um, we fought the ground two hundred and fifty years ago, because consolidated power is a bad thing, and that's un-American, I think that's what bothers people, is what Mr. Ford, he said about that section, I think it was two fifteen nine. So I would just appreciate that you consider, uh, the American Constitution when you, uh, perhaps revisit this and revise what's in this, uh, ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I just wanna make a comment to, to, to the group, oh, Kristen Wing, uh, two two nine eight six, Cedar Berry Avenue. At least I'm memorizing my address through, through this process. Um, I almost wrote a letter to the editor last time, kind of, uh, uh, offering, in a way, a, a white flag. I think you can see that there are a lot of people with a lot of energy who really care about this county, and all of this energy could basically be channeled to something that helps all of you. I just don't understand why we have to be at loggerheads. I don't understand why we can't sit and talk about it. You probably have your reasons, now, we are somewhat skeptical, because we know that there are some friends, family, business kind of connections behind the scene, that's what seems to happen, people get into, to, uh, to a position, uh, an office position, and whether you want or not, people come to you, and they, and, and, and they pitch things, that's part of the process. But I think there's just a lot of energy out there, a lot of people who would help you, a, a lot of expertise, some of us coming in that, that, um, some of the old timers, you might say, are just skeptical, because we came from the outside. Well, we, we, but we come, we're, we're educated, we've got lots of energy, we're bringing our hearts and souls here, we're, we're doing things like starting, uh, we're, we're volunteering for, volunteering for the, the, um, the hospital boards, we're volunteering for the library, we're doing a lot in the community, and you guys could tap into that too. So I think you've got, I know that I came from, uh, Fortin Lane, Idaho, St. Louis County, and then I was on, actually, a study commission where the commissioners, uh, each elected, uh, brought three people, uh, two, two could vote, and one was an alternate, to study a particular issue. We, we were paid, it was a pretty cheap process, because while someone from the county would come and take minutes of our meetings, uh, we did everything on our own, it was totally volunteer. That's the kind of thing that I think you benefit from, because maybe if you heard our stories, and, and we could talk to you about the fact that, yeah, I understand, I needed gravel when my home was built. You know, we're, we're painting ourselves kind of like at the national level, you're either on this side or on that side. No, I think a lot of people are somewhere in the middle, and I know I get pretty emotional and adamant, uh, uh, when, when I'm talking, but mostly it's because I'm frustrated that we just can't sit and talk about things. Or, uh, we can't use the expertise that's in this room and elsewhere to basically advise, you can ignore it, you've got the power, uh, you know, we, we put you in office, and then we trust that you're going to vote for us. We may not agree with the vote, but at least if we're at the table, and at least if we can contribute, uh, we would feel that the, it was at least a democratic process.
All right, well, these are all good things to consider, and, and I feel like we've allowed you to speak your piece today.
You have, thank you.
I apologize, I was a little tough getting going in the beginning, I just tried to keep things moving along, but, but, uh, I appreciate everyone's comments, they're all noted. Uh, this is not a, this is not gonna be an easy decision on this whatsoever. Is there anyone else in the bottom room that would like to speak at this time?
I just have a question, and again, Judith Lamb, one nine nine three two, Gomber Road. Is there any possibility of putting language in that would allow us to do a referendum on a CUP decision, on, on a decision by the Board of Adjustment, just like we could with commissioner decisions?
Um, I don't know, it's a Bruce question.
I think the answer is no, I think state law applies the, state law says a Board of Adjustment, uh, Board of Adjustment making a decision is, is, well, doesn't say it's not referable, you have to look at another statute that says- You have to look at another statute that says what is referable. Decisions of county commissioners are referable, so if the case is Moody versus Besch, County, Besch, County versus Moody County. Besch versus Moody County. And, and that says, that, that considered the question, I think, of, of whether a Board of Adjustment decision is referable. And the Supreme Court, South Dakota said that state law does not allow for Board of Adjustment decisions to be referred. And so that's the law. And so I don't think you can allow something that state law occupies the field.
Okay, anyone else? One more time. Anyone else that would like to speak this time before we close it? Uh, wanna close the hearing first, sir? No one else in the body in the audience?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to mention that I wrote several articles in the paper telling why we needed to gravel what we're doing. Do it if I don't believe you rather than not.
Okay, alright.
Pretty inappropriate.
Any, any other comments, any other comments? Anyone like to speak?
We just did that sign in sheet so some people in the back.
Absolutely. Alright, I am gonna close the public hearing at this time, so we will uh, address this issue again at our next meeting. Did you say nine thirty, Bruce?
Well, no, actually, nine forty five, so May fourteenth at approximately nine forty five, I'll be here literally just in case they're running ahead.
Okay, we still have to finish our meeting. Bruce, you have someone else who might have to come in?
I think there was a speaker that talked about hearing items in the public. Okay, but all the, 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 just for now here.
Otherwise, that was it, right?
Um, we, we have an executive session. I'm gonna mute this for now while the room clears up.
Okay, uh, we've covered the majority of our agenda other than executive session. Or legal matter. Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
That's okay. You were taking notes.
I'm only going to executive session.
No, not yet, no. Not yet.
Got a public comment.
Then I'll disappear, I promise. Ron Muller, one one two two one sheet, Doug Melchroth. Also the Vice President of the Lee Fire District Board. Um, a little surprised about the appointment of replacements with Mr. Wilson. Um, I've been in contact with the president, one of our members on the board, uh, got a little out ahead of their skis. No reflection on, on Brenda or, or the commission. And we all approved it now, we're gonna do it formally in tomorrow night's meeting, but just letting you know that kind of like. But we're just glad to have a fifth member.
Yeah, well, I didn't know anything about it.
I know, I know nobody did. I know, and I'm not throwing blame, I really just wanted to be in the proper discussion, but I wanna make it part of the record, but.
Okay. That you are approving it at your meeting?
Well.
Ratifying?
Ratifying.
Thank you, yes.
And when is your meeting?
Tomorrow night.
Okay. Thank you.
You're getting at the chairman, I think Susan Ave had indicated she was gonna be here and I've looked for her in the hallway, I don't see her.
Can she, do we have any other items other than the last?
See you, Ron.
I'm gonna keep saying that, I would eliminate a motion to that. Oh, I'm sorry, Richard. Second. Okay, we have a motion in a second to go into executive session. All those in favor will say aye.
Ten fifty three, okay, I shut my cell phone. I am off. Push it again and rock.
Folks, if you're online, uh, the commission's gonna go into executive session, gonna beat the microphone, I'm gonna turn the camera on as well for the time being, but the commission will have to come back into session at some point to conclude their meeting, so stand by.
There we go. Okay, we are, we have come out of executive session without any, any decisions made. Is there anything further to come before the board, anything from the commanders? Oh.
Is it?
Yes, just come on in. I was looking for you. You just got here in time.
Well, good deal, I'm glad that I checked it out.
Come on up and sit down and give us your name and address for the record. You have the board.
My name is Susan Porto Day. My address is one twenty seven thirty two Proxell Street. Most of you guys probably know me, or a lot of you do. I said, I come in today because I had several complaints about problems that were happening on the evil. I said, a lot of times you cut, you, you know, you have these complaints and you, you say something, it's always, we don't have any jurisdiction on Proxell Street, we don't have any jurisdiction. We have no police officers out there. I said, that could do anything. Or in the outhouse right here, you know, a couple of weeks ago at the end of February. I said, I left town, when I came back, the neighbor had sent me these pictures. And I said, one of the pincers, um, had gotten knocked over with one of the signs that said private property. I said, these people are coming out here now, these ATV'ers are vandalizing our signs on Proxell Street and on, on Martin Street. They come off of Piedmont Fire Trail. We just had a couple of women that had a wreck out there, one of them got killed. It's like, how many people have to get killed out there before they're actually gonna do something? I said, every night I get woke up, you know, between twelve thirty, one o'clock. Last, just this weekend, it was one forty five, I got up because I could hear the ATVs, I looked, there's about five of them going up, um, Piedmont Fire Trail. You know, those people are not, they're drinking, they're coming from the bars down there and they're having the Piedmont or the, the evil fire trail. I said, well then, I said, I just had a problem with, um, Dan, oh, I forgot Dan, Troy Say's daughter, I evidently have to, don't know the woman, but just trying to help Troy out. I said, just last week, I was looking at my window, she come by and she's vandalizing one of the signs on Proxell Street. She's trying to tear down the sign, two of my property are both, and I got five miles an hour. You know, I just, the ATVs, louder, the faster they go, the louder they are, the noisier they are. And I said, they tear up the roads, we're responsible as homeowners to take care of these roads, well, these ATVs are tearing them up. And I said, um, anyway, she vandalized, tried to tear down the sign five mile an hour, she couldn't do that, so then she went to the other post and she tore down, um, the flag that I had on there. We, we ended up having a mouth fight, she ended up taking, uh, 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 taking me up in front of a judge.
Product protection order, right?
Yes, that's what she did. The judge threw it out because there was nothing to it, it was, it was all a bunch of lies. And I said, this is what really turned me off, sitting there listening to these lies that this woman had sat there and said. She's trying to vandalize the signs and then she's gonna take me to court saying that I, I had done something wrong to her. Well, I've got all these pictures. I said, I had a lawyer tell me a long time ago, take pictures, they're worth a thousand words. I've been taking pictures. I said, this was a sign that was up here, that was up here, that we had to take down, it said private road. I said, private road. We took that sign down there, we took that sign down there.
There was a lawsuit involving the neighbors, I testified, it is actually. And the court determined that, that the sign that said what, uh, road, both the, the local traffic, or whatever the signs had.
It says right on there, it says.
Taken down.
Private property, or it's private road, a resident's own, that's what it said. We had to take that one down. But then the neighbor that have, and I said, all these pictures are from, these are all from Troy's dumping his sewer down the middle of Proxell Street. All these pictures are, are all pictures of, of, um, I've turned it into the city, you know, Amber says, well, he can, he can, he can, you know, haul his own sewer, yeah, he could probably haul his own sewer. But look, you see in the right to be able to dump that sewer down the middle of the boat. None of you guys are gonna want sewer dumped down the middle of your road. And I said, I've taken it in, these are all.
So, so he's collecting it and dumping it on the road?
And these are all the reports that I've taken and, and got from the, from the, from the city of the sewer being dumped down the middle of the road.
Susan, is it, is it fair to say that he's got a honey pot, right? And so he's cleaning out his septic, is that what he's doing?
He's got everything, he cleans out the houses.
Okay, so theoretically, he then, he does that and he gets on the road on Proxell Street and he's going to wherever he dumps it. And I think what you're saying is he's not necessarily got the spigot open, but it's dripping as it's going down the road.
It's an old sewer truck, I said, if you wanna look at these pictures.
And so you, over time, have collected samples?
Yes.
And you've sent those to the state who, who have been tested.
And these are the, these are the pictures, I mean, this little cloud, this, this pictures of, of the sewer being dumped down the middle of Proxell Street. And then, I said, not this, only this problem, but then we got garbage out there. I said, you guys told him years ago that he had to pick up his garbage every, every day. Cause his garbage was getting dumped into the, wrecking into the, the neighbor's truck. So what does he do? He goes and buys a garbage truck. And with his garbage truck, he picks it up and leaves it there for months on end. With big old fly bangs on the back of it. And I don't really know positively sure what states, if it's the sewer truck or the, or the garbage truck. But I mean, it's, it's, it's horrible. This man has been, you know, able to get away with this for years. And I said, nobody does anything. You guys came out there years ago, I said, this is a report. I said, um, in two thousand and nineteen, where he came out and he said he couldn't find the sewer being run down the middle of the road because it was a wet, it was a wet weekend that weekend, he couldn't find the, 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 um, the hookups that he had on trees. And I said, here, you, this is right off my deck, the front, my, my, my front deck. You can see that there, he's, he's down in places, but at the time that you guys came out here, you said you couldn't see it. Everybody, they're constantly letting this man get away with murder. And, um, you know, if you see all these.